Can we get started?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'd like to call order the special city council meeting on November 11, 2024. So happy Veterans Day today at six o'clock PM. Adam Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
Next, please.
Item two, invocation given by Stephen Downs, Assistant City Manager, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the American and Texas flags.
Please rise.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to gather tonight as a community that we love to talk about the business of the city, to make decisions that will impact the residents in various ways. Please bless us that we'll be wise in the decisions that we make, will consider the needs of this community. Please bless all in this community as we approach the holiday season and those that are without at this time, that their needs will be met and will be an instrument in helping those needs be met. Bless those that'll speak tonight and share anything that they have prepared, that they'll be able to do so confidently and clearly and will be able to understand the messages that they're sharing. Again, we ask for these blessings tonight. Do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. All right, next, please.
Agenda item three A is a presentation about the American Legion.
And thank you for coming today. I really do appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mayor. I was asked to speak here tonight on behalf of Veterans Day. I'm a Vietnam combat veteran, served two years in Vietnam in 1968 and 69. And one of the things that I thought I'd like to say tonight is just really what is the difference between Veterans Day and Memorial Day? A lot of people get that confused, so I'd like to speak about that a little bit. As a Vietnam combat veteran, I can tell you that these two holidays is where tears really well up in my eyes for the most. For those veterans who are living and for those who have sacrificed their last measure of devotion to you and to our country, and then to those families that are left behind to carry the veteran's burden by their sacrifice of the one who have fallen for us and us all. Memorial Day is simply we're celebrating veterans that have died. And Veterans Day, we're celebrating all veterans who are living and dead. And I have a whole speech here that I was going to go into, but I'm not going to do that tonight. I'm going to go off the script like a lot of politicians do. I had an opportunity to meet a Marine. His name is Cal Carpenter. He's a Medal of Honor winner, and he got that medal during the Obama years. And what he did, he jumped on a grenade to save his fellow squad where they could continue to protect the outpost that they were on. So as we were driving to dinner to have with him and the group that I was with, I didn't know he was going to be sitting at our table. I didn't know what to say to him. We veterans all the time get, "Thank you for your service," "Welcome home." But combat veterans feel differently. Sometimes they take that, that you're trying to be nice, you know, and so we'll say, "Thank you very much," you know, "We appreciate it." So as we're driving to this dinner and his speaking engagement, I'm telling him, I'm asking my wife, "What do I do to a, how should I introduce myself to a Medal of Honor winner?" "Superfly's not going to do it, I'm Army. That's a code, that's a code in the Marines." "Welcome home's not going to do it." "Thank you for your service" is not going to do it. What do I say to a Medal of Honor winner? So I looked at myself as a combat veteran myself, being infantry ranger in Vietnam, and as I walked up to him, I could feel the vibes, what he's been through, 350-some surgeries to make him where he is today and a compatible young man. I simply said, "Sir, can I give you a hug?" And that meant more to him than anything else. He said, "Absolutely. You are worth it." And so I said, "I'm worth it." I've been wanting to see, what can I say to citizens that welcome me back and stuff? I said, "Can I use your comment?" He's written a book called You Are Worth It. It's a very, very good read if you want to read something. So now I say, "You are worth it." And that is what I'm here for tonight, saying, "Thank you. Thank you for supporting us on Veterans Day because you are worth it." And the American Legion works every day, every day, to aid veterans and their families similar to a case like this. So I want to say thank you very much tonight. And if there's any veterans in the crowd, I have a pen for them, they'd like to have it.
All right, thank you so much. Next, please.
Agenda item three B, Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting.
And who's going to do this one?
All right.
I would do, but I don't have the paper.
I think Lance is going to do it.
Lance is going to do it. Oh, okay.
The Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Seems like every quarter, every year, FATE is recognized for this award. It happens multiple times. It's happened multiple times for various different things, for budget, for transparency. This particular award has to do with the financial reporting and the purpose behind the reports. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting. It is sent to the National Association and a number of, and I don't know how many cities participate in this, but it's nationwide. And FATE has continually and consistently received awards from this government, or from this entity. And this particular award demonstrates the constructive spirit of full disclosure of the financial story of the city of FATE. This is an important, an important award that proves that our city finance department and our city staff promote open and transparent reporting to the citizens. So with that, I would just like to thank Raju and Teresa for your guys' efforts and everything that you do from a finance perspective. You know, we go through audits all the time, audits are always coming up clean. We go through budgeting season, you guys put a ton of work into the budgeting season, and this, this particular award is really the culmination of all of your efforts in our reporting. And I think that as citizens of FATE, we should be not only proud, but be secure in the knowledge that our finance team lays it all out for everybody to see each and every single day. So, thank you. Raju?
Next will be item four, public comment, and I've received four requests to address the council. First being from Hannah Dasani, address 110 Haley Drive, wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda, and the topic being the progression of Joe Burger Park.
Hey, welcome. How you doing?
How are you?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Yeah, as she said, I'm Hannah, Hannah Faith Dasani, I'm 14, my address is 110 Haley Drive. Yeah, okay. Today I'd like to address the topic of the development of Joe Burger Park, mainly the pavilion cover. The seating's already there, but the top isn't, and it's really hot a lot of times. And so either via the sun directly or the burning hot bench. Now, on the map of Phase One that you can access online, there's many features to come that seem fun and interesting, but I feel along with many others that the element that needs to be added next will be the pavilion top. I do understand that these things take time. However, this town is growing rapidly, or the city is growing rapidly, and it's been over two years since construction was initiated. The voters have approved 3.25 million in bonds to complete this project, and it can be the heart of the nearby community. So this is why I brought these matters to your attention, and I would like to propose that they be completed when, as soon as possible. Thank you for the opportunity for me as a loyal citizen to make my voice heard.
Thank you for doing this. Great job. Thank you. All right, next, please.
Next is Steve Huffman, address 6824 West State Highway 66, wants to speak on an item not on the agenda, topic being Katrina's Pizza Party.
Welcome. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Steve Huffman's 6824 State Highway 66 on FATE. In FATE. It's always surprising how people can get kind of wound up on Facebook or social media. I thought there'd be no empty seats today, but there is a big hubbub about Katrina Pearson holding a gathering of dignitaries from different parts of Rockwall County. So a lot of questions and concerns about who was invited, who wasn't invited, what this was about. And I'm politely asking for those who may have been in attendance to refer us to maybe some source for minutes for this program, to explain who was welcome, who wasn't, just to kind of get a little bit more formal idea of what this was about so that we can kind of put down the pitchforks and stop the accusations online. And again, if anybody's watching online, you're always welcome to come to the meetings and ask yourself instead of pitching a fit online, come and find out, come and ask. But if we could get a little bit of disclosure on the pizza party that happened at Luigi's, I know that place and I know those rolls, I know where that was, but to kind of dispel any misinformation or myths about what's going on, if we could get some heads up on what this was about, I think a lot of people may get their answers, but it may have to come directly from whoever was there.
Okay, thank you so much.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, please.
Next is Rodney Brumlo, address 102 Jeremy Drive, wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda, topic is Katrina Leadership.
Hey, welcome, Mr. Brumlo. How you doing?
Good.
Good.
Rod Brumlo, 102 Jeremy Drive, Roy City or FATE. You know, kind of the same deal, you know, we're, this Katrina deal, you know, they say it was invite. Was it an invite? If it was, how come two conservative councils got left off? We've got Alan, he's termed out. We could have put Mark Cody on there and progressed forward with that information. The city hadn't divulged any information yet. What was the meeting about? Was it a quorum? You know, it just bad optics. And I think citizens deserve some answers of what that meeting was about, was it a quorum? But to leave off some council members, it was one-sided, I thought. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next, please.
Mr. Brumlo also signed up to speak about agenda item 6C, which is the speed limit change. Did you want to hear his comment during this portion or later?
Sure. I know you're, if you want to do it now, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, 6C, you know, here several months ago, I brought up about lowering speed limits in residential sections. And all of a sudden, we're coming up and lowering it in the city, downtown streets, residential. Why not in all of them? You know, we've got kids out there playing, narrow streets, you know, in these neighborhoods, we need to lower the speed limit. I would say lower it to 20. There's no reason for cars to be going up and down these roads at 30 miles an hour in our residential sections. We're going to get a child run over. Said my piece, but if it's good for here, it's good for the whole city.
I understand. Thank you. All right, next.
And the last request to address the council is from Karen Kaiser, address 1093 North Churchill Drive, wishes to speak about an item not on the agenda, topic is Government Conduct and Open Meetings Act.
Good evening, Karen Kaiser, 1093 North Churchill. Ethical accountability among government officials, elected and appointed, is expected and mandated by Texas law. I know that y'all are trained by the Texas Municipal League. I can't speak to those who go to the training and do not seem to understand the Open Meetings Act, when it's applicable, when it's not. But I, for one, and I know there's more than me in the city, have had it up to here. The, it's not me, it's my wife excuse, whether you're elected or appointed, has gone too far. There are secret Facebook sites, secret Facebook accounts, on and on and on. And horrible misinformation is shared there. And I'm blocked from everything, and still I know. And it disparages six of you. It disparages the staff that work their behinds off. And I've had enough. So, I hope FATE will take action on it, because it's pretty easy to trace an IP address. I'm a boomer, and I'm not techie. But intentional misinformation is lying and disparaging elected officials who work hard and calling conservatives liberal. Anything you make up sticks. It has denigrated the beauty of the City of FATE. And the majority of us need to wake up and speak out. But until FATE gets active, it is applicable to the Texas Ethics Commission, the Attorney General who enforces the Open Meetings Act. And most know it's not applicable to a Katrina function. I didn't see y'all at the Government Abbott. You either get invited or you don't. And you can't pitch a hissy fit demanding an invitation. And you're probably not on the Christmas card list either. Not my problem. But the second, it infiltrated our election. It's just gone too far. And I'll take it up with the Secretary of State, the Attorney General's Office, and the Texas Ethics Commission. But I hope the City of FATE puts their foot down. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate it. Next, please.
Next is Consent Agenda. But Mayor, we are having some technical issues. I've gotten a text from outside parties saying that the audio is not working. Could we have like just a minute for Michael Wright to go and try to reset the audio?
Yes, we can. No problem. Thank you. So, we're gonna take, listen to this. We're gonna recess for five minutes?
Five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Atley, can we, we're gonna start it. So, Vicky, this, you ready, Mark? Alan, ready? So, we're gonna reconvene the meeting at 6:24 after recess. So, Vicky, do you want to just explain real quick what happened and what we're gonna do about that audio?
So, the audio will not show up on that recording in the morning, but we can try to get just the audio recording and post a link to that as well, so that anyone that missed that first section, so just as long as AT can extrapolate that, or if that's the correct word.
And then, the audio is working right now, correct?
They are correct, yes.
Be good? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, next, please.
Next will be item five, Consent Agenda.
Any questions coming to Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion. We pass the Consent Agenda.
I have a motion. Who's second?
Second.
I have a motion, second by Councilman Robbins. Please vote. Motion is passed at seven to zero. Next, please.
Next is Agenda Item 6A, Hold a Public Hearing on the Proposed Annexation of Approximately 4.3 Acres of Land, Being Known as RCAD ID 11910, and Possible Action on Ordinance Number O2024-060, Approving the Annexation.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Very briefly, I just wanted, for context of this item, I provide you an aerial, shows the location of the property in question. This, Item 6A and 6B are both cases where there was a non-development agreement established with the property owner. The term of that non-development agreement expired. And in negotiations with the property owner, we were able to secure a written services agreement for the property and conducted all the necessary outreach and noticing for the annexations. So, tonight, after the resolution having been passed by council last month, tonight is the ordinance that would affect the annexation for this property and subsequently, the property immediately to the north under Item 6B. Happy to take any questions.
So, so 6A is just a public hearing?
That's right.
Okay, and then 6B is the option?
Is a public hearing for a separate property.
Okay, so we take?
There are two adjacent properties that both expired in relative close proximity to one another temporarily. And so, they're both before you tonight for annexation.
Okay, so 6A is gonna be a public hearing, then a vote, and 6B a public hearing only?
That's right.
Okay.
No, 6B is public hearing and a vote as well.
Yeah.
6B? It's both, right?
Yeah, they're both, they're both, basically the same process for each of them, but they affect two separate properties that are adjacent to each other. So, this one here, and then immediately to the north, that one there.
Just sorry for the confusion, but the part of the Gen I just says whole public hearing. The rest of, is at the end of the paragraph. Normally, we do it in front of that. So, I just want to make clear for the public what we're doing.
Sure.
All right, thank you. I will call a public hearing for Gen I, 6A, at 6:27. Anyone speaking for or against this ordinance? Please step forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 6:27. Any question by council? Seeing none, I will take a motion, please. You have a question? Go ahead.
Ryan, how far is the, any child protective zones from these two lots?
Can you do a question, please?
Are there any child protection zones within the safety zones in that limit?
Related to the sex offender?
Correct.
Registry? Well, I don't have that map with me or anything, but I could tell you that the Children's Lighthouse would be a daycare that would affect that. And that's located just to the north in the western blue rectangle, just to the north of that property. So, it would be within that buffer from a daycare.
And currently, these two lots are exempt from that city ordinance.
That's right, because they're not in the city limits.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan, and how many feet?
It's 2,000 feet.
I know, I know that part. How far are the houses from? How many feet?
Well, let's see, the, so the eastern property line of the rectangle that's highlighted in yellow is 200 feet. So, I would say that from the Children's Lighthouse, you're probably gonna be encompassing the entirety of both of those parcels within that exclusionary buffer.
Okay. Michael, do we have to expand the map? Or do we wait, and we can tell council later? But I think we have, historically, we have to spend on the map, right?
We've got, I'd have to take a look and see if it already.
Okay.
Because now, you're in the city limits.
The buffer is there, we just have to, we just.
I get it.
We have to show those.
Yeah, but the corner is clear. It's 2,000 feet within an area where children are commonly gathered, right? So, we just, as an action, can we, Michael, just take a look at that, please?
I, I think we also need to look at the fact that our ordinance says that we can't, it's not proactive. If someone's already there and we zone them, it doesn't matter, you know, that's a, that's a future statement first.
Yeah, I get it, but let's do one thing at a time. So, Michael, can we look at the zones for both? At 6A and 6B, the same as you.
Absolutely.
6A and 6B, and come out to council if we need to spend the map or not?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Alan, you good? All right, any more comments on this one? If not, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion. We approve ordinance O2024-060.
I have a motion, I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, I have a second. Any more discussion with council? All right, so, please vote. Who did vote? Mark Atley. No, he did vote Harper. Scott. All right, so can we do this, Vicky? So, Scott, what was your vote?
Yes.
Okay, Scott's vote's yes, so the motion passes at seven to zero, please. Okay?
Do we know? Okay.
No, we have sixes there on here, but I don't know what happened. So, Scott publicly announces his vote is yes, so makes the motion pass seven to zero for the record.
So, seven to zero, everyone voted in favor. Great.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Agenda Item 6B, Hold a Public Hearing on the Proposed Annexation of Approximately 4.39 Acres of Land, Being RCAD ID 11909, and Possible Action on Ordinance Number O2024-061, Approving the Annexation.
Same.
So, as reflected in the image on the map here, the adjacent property to the north of the property just approved for annexation is also included in tonight's agenda. It's approximately 200 feet north of Charleston Lane along FM 551. So, again, same process. Exploration of the non-development agreement, written services agreement has been signed and approved. All public noticing has been fulfilled. So, tonight's ordinance is the final step in the annexation process.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any question from council? Seeing none, I'll take, I'll also open the public hearing at 6:31. Anyone opposing or supporting the ordinance? Please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 6:31. I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion. We approve ordinance 2024-061.
I have a motion, I have a second?
I'll second.
Sent by Mark Harper. Any more council discussion? Seeing none, please start. Motion is passed at seven to zero. We're having, we're technology night. All right, next, please.
Agenda Item 6C, Discuss Considering Take Any Necessary Action Regarding Ordinance Number O2024-062, Changing Speed Limits in Downtown Neighborhoods From 30 Miles Per Hour to 25 Miles Per Hour.
Mr. Downs, is this yours?
Mayor and Council, this is a continuation of discussion we've had previously regarding changing residential speed limits, specifically in the downtown roads. Anything we do tonight, of course, doesn't exempt us from doing it in future neighborhoods as we move forward. As we, as we discussed in the past, going from 30 to 25 miles per hour allows us to do without a study. If we were to go from 30 to, if we were to go to 20 miles per hour, it requires a pretty significant study. And if we were to do that citywide, that study becomes very significant. There have been bills run in the state legislature in the past to try to get 20 miles per hour without a study. Those bills just haven't been, haven't been successful.
So, you have, now, Michael, the bill number from last year? Nope. Sorry.
No.
I'll find it, Norris. Okay, thank you.
So, cities are only allowed to do this in a couple of circumstances. And the roads we're talking about tonight do meet those. Two-lane undivided highway, not part of the state highway system. And the council determines that the default limit is unreasonable or unsafe. So, the city council was directed to prepare an ordinance, which is before you tonight, changing the speed limits downtown and listing what roads would be impacted. What you have before you tonight shows all roads downtown, and I'll show a map here in just a second, going to 25 miles per hour. Rather than providing multiple options, and those options could be endless. If, in working with our city attorney, if there's any roads that anybody would want off of that list, that could just be included in the motion. And we did pull some research. And as we've shown you before, Chief Lombard has access to a tool that helps us track actual speed limits on roads within the city. Just so you know, the east, downtown, the east-west roads that you see throughout town that you're looking at, Elmhurst, Dogwood, and Black Oak and such, we're averaging about 12 to 15 miles per hour of actual speed. The 95th percentile goes only as high as about 21 miles an hour. Your north-south roads, which are Barnes and Crawford, sorry, CB Davidson, you'll see averages of about 25 miles per hour and the 95th percentile of about 27, 28. So, that's the actual data downtown. The estimated cost to make this change and place signs throughout the downtown, approximately $9,000. There is a state, a requirement by state law that if we were to change the speed limits below the default 30, every February 1st, we have to do a comparison of the two previous calendar years to show citations, warnings, and accidents on those roads that are attributable to, attributed to speed limit violations. That's currently not a study that we're required to produce. So, looking at the map downtown, those are the roads that are included in your, in the ordinance before you today. That does include, right as of now, Black Oak going all the way to the frontage. It includes FATE Main going all the way to the frontage. Black Oak, I know we had a discussion. Again, it's the council's prerogative to amend the ordinance before you, given the gala and the on-street parking that kind of aligns it. We felt like that would be best to keep at the 25 miles per hour as well. However, again, it's your prerogative. The road Crawford going straight through, the reason that's not highlighted is that's a state road. We wouldn't be allowed to do it, as is FATE Main, as you turn west until you cross 66. That's part of 551. And that's all I have for you tonight. Any, any questions from the council?
Cody, any questions?
I don't have any questions or comments. My knee-jerk reaction was, you know, I'm a mom and I want to make sure that kids are safe from reckless drivers or speeders. But after looking at the data, it looks as if there's really not a speeding problem. And we would have to spend $9,000 in order to change it. And so, personally, I do not support changing the speed limit.
Okay, thank you, Cody. Mark?
Yeah, I do have a question about the money as well. Why, why are we having to buy 27 new poles if we already got speed limit signs on them? Why can't we just put new speed limit signs on them?
I don't believe we had speed limit signs down there. Those are for additional signs. Oh, yeah, sorry, for additional signs. Now that we're changing it from 30 to 25, we're required to do signage in all those places.
Okay.
Because default is 30. If you drive through neighborhood, you wouldn't see as many speed limit signs.
Okay, all right.
Good question.
Scott? Alan?
Yeah, I'm still advocating trying to get the state law changed to remove traffic studies. I think they should be a lot lower in the downtown area for, you know, driving, biking, walking, et cetera. But doing it citywide is, can, can get expensive. And the speeds, speed study apparently isn't ridiculous, study apparently isn't particularly, even more expensive than the signs themselves. I'd support a lower than that, but that's just me.
Mark Hally?
Looking at the study, it just doesn't seem like speeding is the problem. I mean, it's, I'm pretty sure probably most of the tickets are probably written for running stop signs and things like that, and we've all seen that. But I just don't see spending, you know, $9,000. I actually ran these, a lot of these streets today. I could not get up to 30 miles an hour in a lot of the areas after the stop signs. So it's, I don't know, it just seems to me like it's a solution still looking for a problem. Now, I do support in most cases dropping the speed limits on there, but right here, I'm just not seeing time-wise, you know, a good time to go spend $9,000. I just don't see the problem just yet.
Lance?
All right. I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number 02024-062, excluding Black Hawk Lane west-east of Crawford, and excluding West Fayette Main Place east of, I believe that's Daisy Lane, which is a part of the, it's part of that neighborhood right there.
You want to exclude, right?
Excluded.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further council discussion? Vicki, are we good with the motion? Any question from council on the motion? Seeing none, please vote. All right, motion passes four to three with Councilwoman Chin, Councilwoman Megan Lissy, and then Councilman, I mean, Mark Hally, voting no. Next, please.
Next will be Agenda item 6D, discuss, consider, and give staff direction regarding requiring utility accounts to be in the name of the owner.
Who asked this one?
I'm back.
You're back? You coming for more? Nice. Let's even go two for two tonight, Stan.
There's nothing to vote on tonight.
All right.
But this is a continuation. We, this discussion was introduced to y'all a number of months ago, and as obviously a very good council, you asked for additional data before we directed staff to do anything. So tonight is additional data, additional opportunities to discuss, and if it be the desire of the council, we would then bring forward, likely in the meeting in December, the ordinance changing code to require utilities. Again, we're only talking about the city utilities, water, wastewater, garbage, in the name of the owner. So again, the background of this is the city has fixed costs when they operate utilities. If a bill goes unpaid, the city is still required to make whatever payments associated with that account. Most of the bill goes to fixed costs, like paying our bonds, infrastructure needs throughout the system, the employees. Those things that don't go away if a bill is unpaid. And while there is a part of it that's the actual commodity of water, that's a relatively small part of the bill. Texas law doesn't allow the city to hold the owner responsible if the utilities are in the tenant's name and they go unpaid. So essentially, the rest of the community is required to make up that difference when those bills go unpaid. There are financial and operational impacts that generally come from single-family rental properties. Again, this is only a requirement that would be, well, let me say this. The requirement would be for all residential properties. Multifamily are already done this way because multiple units share one meter. So single-family are the ones where there's one unit, one meter, and those ones currently are allowed to be in the name of the tenant. The financial impact, an account with the utilities, and we'll show you the data, if they're in the name of the tenant, is much more likely to be sent to collections and therefore written off as bad debt than utilities with the name of the owner, that are in the name of the owner. And an operational impact, again, an account with the utilities in the name of the tenant is more likely to have a work order than an account with utilities in the name of the owner. Rental properties currently make up about 15% of our utility accounts. So if both types of utility accounts acted the same, you'd see that same kind of spread. But here, you see total connections made, so new accounts, or putting the accounts into a new residence name. 27% of those connections are made with rentals, and 72 are non-rentals. But again, 15% of the accounts are rentals, but about double that of the connections, because we have a lot of one-year leases. And so every time those come up, often they're put into a different person's name. Chance of going to collections, you'll see rental property 6.21, so just over 6% of rental accounts, utilities in the name of the renter, I should say, go to collections, where about 1% of owner-occupied utility accounts go to collections. So about six times more likely to go to collections if it's in the name of a tenant. The chance of being cut off in a 12-month period, about 20, almost 28% of our rental accounts will be cut off in a 12-month period, again, on average. Non-rentals, about 9%. So you're about three times more likely to have a utility account cut off. We do have a number to go with that collections. Raju ran, our most recent audit will show about 44,000, just under 45,000 of bad debt, utility account debt. About 38,000 of that will be from rental properties, and about 6,700 of that will be from, so about 85% of our bad debt that's written off is a utility account in the name of a tenant. So going forward and directed, the city would bring an ordinance with code changes requiring the utilities to be in the name of the property owner. We would allow sufficient time for all property owners and tenants to adapt to the code changes and come into compliance approximately 12 months. Any new account that would be set up, of course, from the time of adoption moving forward, if that is your decision, would be required to be in the name of the owner. Any new utility account, oh, and that's the third. We recognize that this is a pretty significant change in how we do things. There would be, of course, some landlords that would not love this change. But as we look out for the interest of the city, not just financially, but also the impacts on our staffing levels and such, we believe this is a change that would benefit the city of Fayette moving forward.
Okay. Lance, any questions?
So how in practicality is this going to work? If you have the utility account put in the owner's name, and the owner is renting his property, are you going to force the owner to come in and open up the water account?
Yep, that would be, I mean, just like an owner would now. It's a one-time thing. They would come in and put the utilities in their name.
And what else? You're going to ask them to submit an application? You're going to ask them to put in a deposit, correct?
If, definitely the application, and if a deposit's required, yes.
Okay, so the same thing would happen if the renter came in. You're going to ask them to submit a deposit and an application?
Correct.
As part of the application, do you do a credit check?
That would be an operation, Raju, if you want to come forward. Credit checks on any of our applicants.
Right now, we don't do any credit check. That's why we.
So you just take the deposit?
Deposit, yeah.
And currently, there is 1.2 million roughly in deposits in the water accounts?
In both.
In both?
The utility account. That includes the water and the wastewater.
And the wastewater. And overall, I know we're going to have another topic on this earlier, but the way that this, the way that I envision or see this working is that the owner's going to have to come in, whether it's company, whatever, and open up a water account. That means that they're going to either, one, have to build water into their rental rate, or try and get, or trying to get their renter, submit them an extra bill on a monthly basis, and we're putting, you know, just collect the amount of money that it is, because it's variable, right?
It would be like a multifamily does now. The multifamily is already required to do this. It would be now operating the same way.
Well, I see that people expect that from multifamily unit, that that's built into the leasing and all that. And I'm not sure how that works. But their invoice, but if you have a homeowner who leaves, rents his property, and has to come up with a whole billing system in order to collect it, the money, and try to get the money from the renters, it just seems like you're going to get into a bigger quagmire, in my opinion, on the way that this works. Thanks.
Okay. Mark?
Is there a way to mobiley set it up? Because you're going to have a lot of institutional investors that are probably going to be from California, different places, or will they physically have to be in Fayette to go set them up?
Yeah, they do have the ability to do it completely remotely. And most of our institutional investors actually do keep it in their name. They have so many accounts. So, and that, again, I don't have all the data on that, Raju. You may have more, but definitely they can do it all remote.
Okay. That was my only question.
Yep.
Alan?
Seems like you're putting the hardship on the owner rather than the tenant, and that creates a different dynamic between the two. You know, like multifamily is one thing. You've got a couple of bathrooms, sinks and stuff like that. You don't have irrigation. You don't have any of the other factors that go into a single-family home that you would. I would sure hate to be, have a rental and my tenant leaves their water running for a week straight, you know, something like that, where now I've got a $4,000 water bill, and they just disappear. Is there a way to have primary and a secondary on the account?
No, so that's actually kind of why, there's some, I think there's some states where they just make the owner ultimately responsible, so that if the tenant were to bail, it would have to be paid. But the state of Texas specifically doesn't allow a third party to be held responsible for utility account. They consider the owner to be a third party.
So you would send the owner the water bill, and then they would have to turn around and send it to their tenant to pay. Could the tenant pay the city for the water, or do they have to pay the owner of the house?
The tenant pays the owner of the house. Usually, they add on, add the water bill or the sewer bill along with the rent, so it will be inflated amount. Includes the rent, the water, and the wastewater.
Now, there are, the tenant could pay, and the owner would be allowed to set up to add the email address of the tenant and have them receive an email copy of the bill every month. I was working with our utility billing staff this morning. So, and then they have, there's a quick pay option where they can go on without logging into an account, and if they have the right information, they can make a payment without having to log into the owner's account.
So you could have two emails on the account?
Yes.
I think one email, but the owner would receive a physical copy.
Subject to, we are not supposed to disclose the account to the tenant unless we receive a confidentiality agreement from the owner.
Correct. The owner would have put in email address of the tenant on their, in their own, they would make that choice, that it would be sent to the tenant.
I mean, I get how this kind of puts a heavier weight on whether you want to rent a single-family home in City of Fayette or not. Kind of puts that as an extra hurdle, if you will. But I just don't know how I would feel getting a $4,000 water bill, because my tenant left the water running and bailed for a month. I don't know what the remedy would be for that.
No, and I can understand that. I'm not, I wouldn't even argue that. If that were to happen now, the rest of the residents would be asked to make up the difference. And so, I mean, kind of part of our thinking through this is, when you choose to rent your business property, you're entering into a business arrangement, and those, the responsibility should be with the business owner, in this case, the landlord. Now, those situations are difficult. They could happen, and it would be between the owner and the tenant to work out. But the citizens of Fayette wouldn't be asked to pay that.
Because like, I guess if an irrigation system breaks on a rental, the owner is responsible for repairing the irrigation system. So.
Well, not necessarily. We've seen new leases that are transferring, especially with these corporations, they're transferring tree maintenance, irrigation systems, all sorts of stuff that you would think would be covered, are now being transferred to the tenants.
Not so much worried about the corporations. They've got their systems in place, but it's, I'm more worried about the individuals. So, I don't know. It seems weird to me.
Understood, for sure. And I will say, in talking with our utility billing, one scenario we do run into is, for example, a toilet that's leaking. Currently, if the tenant is responsible for the water bill, and the cost of the toilet replacement would be the responsibility of the landlord, the landlord may be less inclined, and has been, in some cases, less inclined to fix that, because that's their cost to bear. A leaking toilet is the responsibility of the tenant in that arrangement.
Can we charge a higher deposit for rentals?
Sure. No, you absolutely, absolutely have the prerogative to do that. It costs a lot to get into a rental currently with one, you know, first, potentially last month's rent.
But is there a way to differentiate between owner-occupied and renter-occupied properties?
Yeah, and that's how we have the data. We make that differentiation currently.
I think keeping it in the renter's name with a higher deposit could help offset some of those costs. Our attorney's talking. Maybe I can't do that.
I will ask her.
We would have to look into that. You're talking about the utility deposit, not the deposit for the rental.
Utility deposit, correct.
Right. We would have to look into that.
Oh, okay.
Differentiate between owner-occupied, renter-occupied properties.
Yeah, right now, it's the same deposit. So rental, owner and 100 for water, 50 for the wastewater.
I guess my point would be, if they're renting a property, they should, they could do a higher deposit to help cover collection costs should they decide to leave.
In our city attorney actions, we need to research and make sure we're allowed to differentiate on the amount.
I was going to say, there's a fairness, there's a constitutional issue there.
Potentially. We can look into that.
Yep, thank you. Scott?
So the other thing, I would say on this, I support the idea of doing this, because whether you're an individual owning a house, choosing to rent it out, or a corporate entity, you're operating more like a business as opposed to personal residence. And as a business owner of one house or 100 houses, you should be responsible for the activities in that house. If the renter skips out on a rent, a couple of months' rent, and they skip town, the business owner has the recourse to go after that renter to collect. It's a lot harder for us to, on the water side, to be able to do that in a cost-effective manner. So to shift these liabilities from our responsibility and our citizens' responsibilities to people that are willingly choose to do business in this rental space makes sense to me. So I support it.
Mark?
Yeah, first of all, the 1.2 million dollars, I thought we asked you guys to get that distributed.
Hey, this is a different gen item. The gen item you're talking about is.
No, this is the 1.2 million dollars of the.
G, 6G.
Okay. I'll get back to it on 6G.
You can come back on 6G.
That's fine. So the second, the other thing is, I agree with Scott as well, that right now, you know, the burden is going on others in the city, and owning a rental is owning a business, and that business should be responsible for the usage of the water that's not getting paid for. Other citizens should not be responsible for that. Cody?
When would we start requiring this? Would it be immediately, and everybody who, like all the institutions, all the owners, landlords, would they be required to come in within a certain amount of days? Or is this just going forward, people that are purchasing these homes and then renting them out, would they then have to do it? I'm just wondering about the timeline and all that.
So we would, if this were something that city council would choose to adopt, from that point moving forward, any new accounts that are being created would have this requirement. We would put a 12-month period of time for all others to come into compliance. A lot of them would be captured naturally, just as leases are acting. Some may have leases that extend beyond that, but at 12 months, we will have required, and we'll continue to communicate throughout that time, a simple way for people to make that change. But we feel like 12 months is fair to give people a chance to adjust to leases that they may be in.
Gotcha. Personally, I'm in favor of this. I don't think that it's fair that the rest of the citizens have to pay for a water bill that was left over from a rental. So I support it.
All right. So I think you, let me just review the bidding. So one issue is the transition. How are we going to transition it? Right, you got that?
Yep.
Okay. Next one I have is out-of-state renters. How we handle out-of-state renters, I mean, out-of-state landlords, if they're out of state or they're a corporation, and they're not based in Texas. Next one is, I think, Alan, you're, the relationship between the tenant and the owner relationship. So we're going to investigate the fairness issue on your suggestion. Cody, you brought up the timeframe that you get your question answered. So Stephen, make sure we have solid dates, right? We got, if council passed on this date, that we have solid dates. Okay, so we just know, people know, whether it's not 12 months, we have a date. And I think that's all I got.
Deposits, difference between renters.
That's 6G. Wait a minute. Okay, I'll move it.
That would be 6G.
That'd be 6G. All right. You got that, Stephen? Raju, you guys got the action items?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, and then we'll come back with ordinance, then the council can decide based on the facts what we're going to do next. Okay?
We will not have it for you next week.
Perfect. All right, okay. All right. With council permission, since we keep doing it, can we bring item 6G up into the next item with the council's permission, since we keep doing it? All right, Vicki, let's do 6G, and then we can move on.
Great. Agenda item 6G, discussion regarding utility service security deposits.
All right, Lance, I'll let you lead this one. And Michael, you can jump in when you need to.
So there was a question that came, there was a question that came up about deposits.
Yes.
And I started going through the process of how. And I started going through the process of how City of Fate administers the deposits.
Right now, primarily, we use the deposit towards the last bill. And, and the customer has an option to request the deposit after 12 months of good standing with the city. So we don't refund automatically. They have to request it, otherwise it will stay in the books.
And how are these customers in good standing notified that they have a deposit available to them to request?
Right now, we don't notify. As long as they have 12 months without any cutoff, they are automatically in good standing.
Well, so this, this came about because, it actually, the question came up because I'm planning to move to a new house in Fate. And as a 20-year resident, 20-year water user, I was asking about deposits, whether I could just move the account from the new place or from my old house to the new house when we made, made the change. And the question came up was, well, no, you'd need to do another, you need to put in another deposit. And that brought up the question on, in my mind, from customer service, well, what are we doing with the deposits now? Well, you, you either, you know, when I applied for water deposit back in 2005 when I moved here, there were no deposits. Nobody, it was just an application fee. And so then I started digging, okay, what is, what's the new deposit? $100, you gotta have, you know, two application, or an application fee plus 100. So it worked out to be like $250 and the idea is not the cost of it. It's what happens when I move, when you have a resident move from one house to another house within the city? Does the deposit carry over?
Yeah.
And the answer was, no, it does not. You have to issue a new deposit. You have to prevent another deposit or give another deposit on.
That may have been the initial answer, but then we clarified that we transfer.
No, you did not. You told me specifically you would have to go and get it, put in another deposit. Even though, even though potentially the, potentially it could be waived. And I'm not, I'm not arguing the fact that I have to put another, that I have to put a deposit down. The fact is, is that in digging through this, there's $900,000 worth of deposits sitting on the books that people have the ability to request, and I will bet you 95% of those people don't know it. And the city is not doing anything proactive to return those funds to those people. We just keep it in a fund and collect interest on it and have it invested and continue. And there is no communication from the city perspective out to these people, out to the citizens saying, hey, you have a deposit that you can request. And, and it seems arbitrary from my perspective that, oh, well, after 12 months, you can request it. Well, if we're worried about renters skipping town after 12 months when a 12-month lease leaves, right? And no deposit, what is to say that that doesn't happen for somebody else, whether it's a homeowner or not, on the 13th month? Same kind of thing. I request it and then I decide not to pay my water bill on the 13th month. It, it seems complicated. It seems not well thought of. And just from the simple fact of fairness to our citizens, as a city, if you're gonna, if you're gonna return deposits in 12 months, there, there should be a methodology of telling people that they have a deposit that they can request.
Yeah. We communicate, at the time they sign up for the account, we usually communicate about the deposit, about the 12-month.
But there is no remind, so how do we get $900,000 sitting in an investment fund full of deposits?
A lot of people, they prefer to use that deposit against their last invoice. And some people, they request, I need a paper check. So we usually process the check.
Okay. So just a question, Michael, just a quick question for you. So the intent of the action item tonight is to basically move it, the policy making from an ordinance into the city manager's office so you can make more day-to-day decisions and change the processes with that coming to council.
You all have passed that ordinance?
Yeah, we passed the ordinance, so we are trying to add this to the SOP stand, operating procedures.
There's an ordinance that exists that's in conflict, potentially.
So it says, our goal is to update the deposit and deposit refund and exclude them from the ordinance and make an internal stat, operating procedure.
I think we could still, I mean, we could still reach out to, using the existing ordinance, we could still reach out to the, to the customers.
Okay.
And say, hey, this, it's been the policy that was implemented in 2014 essentially to run it this way. We're starting to become more customer-friendly and so I think we could, we've actually asked ENCODE for a report to try and figure out who are these people in good standing, so they're trying to figure that out for us to do that digitally rather than having this manually. But of course, if anyone contacts us, then we can answer that. And we can answer it in a text message now.
Okay.
Instead of a phone call.
Okay, Michael. Mark, any questions? Alan?
I would like to look at whether we're able to charge a different deposit for renters versus homeowners. Move that from the previous item to this one. If you can get some information on that. I would also like to see on the bill somehow the status of your deposit. Whether you have, the deposit still exists or it's been refunded and have the option to apply it to a bill at some point should you want to. Or just wait until you're, you leave and close the account and then use it for your last bill. Just want a little bit more flexibility with the deposit.
On the bill?
Yeah, why not? I bet you most people who don't, after 12 months, they probably forgot they have a deposit.
Most folks don't read their bill either.
That's my point, though. It's their money. Okay.
Couple of comments. One, the fairness issue again. I want to make sure we don't have a constitutional issue. Clearly landlords are gonna sue us over that one. Number two, I think moving it to staff is a really good idea. Actually, we're supposed to be executive board, so I'll give you direction and we can figure this out. If we're gonna do it on the bill, I know it costs money, so we have to say, how much is it gonna cost? And what percentage of fate actually gets a bill is law, fate does not. They do electronic payments, like I do, ACH, and I don't look at my bill. So we gotta find another way of communicating to public that's more widespread. It's only 9,000 utilities accounts or it's 30,000 residents, so. They gotta find just a better way of communicating. I understand the intent. I agree with the underlying intent. Let's communicate better. We gotta figure that better out. Steven, think that way?
Just, every citizen does get a bill.
Okay, got it. But I pay, so I don't look at it. Yeah. I got it, okay. And that's all I got to say. And then, just a better process. Okay, Mark?
I, I agree with Lance. There was, I was told when I, when my father passed and I took his house over, even though I had been here multiple years with no missed payments, that I would need to put down a second deposit, even though I had an existing water account. Same happened when my, my daughter moved from the front of the neighborhood to the back of the neighborhood. An additional deposit had to be put down for another 12 months. Do we do anything with credit, reporting credit with this stuff at all?
No. We don't do, we don't report to the credit bureau. We don't do the credit check.
Yeah, I don't know if we could do that. That might be against fair housing law.
Well, you have to do it to get a electric bill, so I would check on that as well. But, okay, but I just wanna know, you know, the process, I know Steven's been working on the processes, but the water department processes have been broken for a while. So we need to, I agree with the deposits need to be shown somehow that they, people have a deposit. And if it's sitting in an account and they want it back, they should be able to get it back. And we should tell them it's there, so in case they forgot about it.
Cody, any questions?
Yeah, for clarification on Lance's point, and you have the email, I just wanna find out.
I'm still looking for it.
Okay, so do we transfer? Do we allow them to transfer or, or no? Like if you have, if you go from one house to another, does your deposit transfer or does it not?
Yeah, deposit is transferable. If you have good standing with the city for 12 months, we can transfer from one account to another account for the same owner, for the same owner.
And I think just, that wasn't always the case. That's something that we've updated just recently. So when they reach, I mean, they're, all sides are telling the truth. When they reached out, that was how we did it. We have now made that change. But you get hit with a mark and lance left, right, and you make the change.
All right, so I think the, all the comments were, you got them, so transfer policy, I think we solved that, right? Everybody's good. We have a transfer policy now. Let's communicate it really well. I feel a lot of good way of communicating it is to Alan's point. And I think that was all that I wrote down. Okay, thank you. All right. Steven, you good? All right, next please. We'll go back to 6E.
Okay. Agenda item 6E, discuss, consider and give staff direction regarding appointments to the 2024 Charter Commission.
And who has this one?
I'll take it. Vicki and I will take it. Vicki?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
Okay. So it's time for us to appoint a charter commission to review the charter and report back to the council if they think that there are any amendments that need to be made. In 2018, we appointed a charter commission and it was made up of two council class members, so two members of the council. And then also it had five citizen members. So I'm seeking direction tonight on the composition. Do you want to keep that ratio, two council member, five citizens? Back in 2018, we solicited applications for two weeks and then we brought those applicants in to interview with the council in person and then make appointments. Wanted to see if you wanted to maintain that same flow. And if not, then I'm ready to hear recommendations or other options.
Cody, any comments on that?
So if we have a recommendation for things to be changed in the charter and we're not on, we're not one of the two, how much input would we have, if any at all?
We have to approve the charter, we have to approve the members go on the ballot, so we have a lot to say. We have to final say.
Okay.
Yeah. Mark?
I like the way it was done before. I think.
Good?
I think that, I think the seven-member deal's appropriate. The one thing I would point out is we need to move fast on this to get it on the may ballot because it will require a significant number of meetings for people over fairly short time to make sure we, we hit the may ballot.
Yeah, keep the precedent, precedent of a two-fives, total of seven people.
I'm good with seven.
I want to see it increased to seven, seven citizens.
To what?
Seven citizens to council.
Okay. And I don't like two councils. I want one council. So two councils is just too close to four votes. So, you know, so you have two recommendations. So nine members, with two councils, right? And we have seven members and one council. That's the two proposals I wrote down.
Can, can we consider keeping two council members on the charter commission? But any council member that serves on the charter commission cannot be allowed to vote when the items are presented?
I don't think we can do that. We can't do that if they have to write the vote. Question. Can we put in a stipulation that if you're on another board, you probably should not serve on the, so we can get unique people and unique... Well, we can make an emergency one, which would have to get agreement from the council on that. Okay. All right. If you want to make a, we should vote that out. I think we ought to vote on, honestly, just real quickly. Do you give clear directions staff?
I'm fine with two, two-seven.
Two-seven?
Yeah.
You give it two-seven at times? You give it two-seven? Sure.
Two councils, seven citizens.
Seven citizens, yeah. That'd be nine total. Vicki, go with that?
Two council and seven citizens.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, next suggestion, which we'll vote on. Mark, please state your motion on that. Put a motion in that the citizens be unique citizens and not currently sitting on another board. Okay, I have a motion that the firm, our commission cannot contain a member of another fate board, which would be Peenzy, Parks, what else? Boards.
BOA, MDD.
MDD, BOA. MDD or ZBA.
All right, a motion of seconds. Lance?
No.
Hang on a second, I gotta write this down now. Okay, we gotta know. Mark, Hadley? I'm sorry, what were we asking about? Oh, yes, I have a yes. Alan?
No.
Scott?
No.
Harper? Cody? And I vote no. So the motion passes, fails five to two with...
For clarification, who seconded the motion? I missed that. Thank you very much.
Got that. So the motion fails five to two with, Cody, you voted yes, right? With councilwoman Chen and councilman Mark Harper, I mean, Mark Hadley voting yes for it. Okay, thank you. Vicki, are we good?
Okay, two and seven.
Two and seven?
Yes.
That's the deal. Okay, next please.
Just to clarify timing, that would be December, would be the December meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think everybody seems okay with the timeline. I think it's two weeks is good, like we did last time. Okay.
Yes. Okay. Next will be agenda item 6F, discuss, consider and give staff direction regarding criminal trespass and nuisance issues.
Okay, who's going, this one gonna be? Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, actually, Scott and I brought this to the council. Some of our local businesses were having some issues about a couple of months ago with some homeless people that were camped out on their front steps. And there was some issues with being able to enforce some stuff because we did not have the policies to do it. So we brought this to let the chief and the city attorney take a look at what we could do.
Chief, or Jennifer, who's taking the lead? Oh, nice.
This is a joint operation here?
All right, Jennifer, you're lead on this.
Yes, if we could get the PowerPoint up. So wait, that's the utilities one. Mayor and council, the chief and I are here today to talk about criminal trespass and some other strategies to address nuisance issues. And I wanted to start off by talking about how this area of the law is, is changing very rapidly. There are lots of cases resulting in addressing these issues. There are a lot of constitutional concerns with these issues and even recent US Supreme Court cases regarding these issues. And so, so as we go through this presentation, I wanted to have that framework going forward. So there are several tools in our Texas Penal Code that we use to address these kinds of issues. Criminal trespass being the primary one. It allows people who are on property of another without consent can be prosecuted. That is a Class B misdemeanor, as is the obstruction of highway or other passageway. And you'll notice that this penal code provision, even though it's talking about a highway in the title, also includes a sidewalk, an elevator, an aisle or a hallway. So for instance, if there were a situation where somebody were sleeping in front of a retail store door, that could be a provision that could be used by the police department. I skipped over disorderly conduct only because that is a Class C misdemeanor and it lists several prohibited behaviors. The most relevant to this discussion is abuses or threatens a person in a public place in an offensive manner. Some additional penal code provisions are the prohibited camping. This actually was passed in 2021 by the legislature. It prohibits camping, camping in a public place without the consent. It also creates a list of requirements for peace officers before a citation is written. And the two relevant ones I'm gonna mention is notices must be given advising the person of a legal place for them to camp. And we must store the person's belongings if we detain them. So if we were to detain that person, we would have to store and safekeep their items. And there's other requirements too that I didn't list, list here. And then public intoxication is one that obviously can be used if that, that is the problem. So we do have some tools in our current ordinances that I'm gonna go over. We have a soliciting and roadways ordinance. We have a nuisance, that lists a lot of nuisance and deals with public bathroom functions. And then section 22 of the code is for parks. So it sets hours of operations for the parks. It prohibits sleeping overnight on the seats and benches and couches. It prohibits overnight camping in the parks. I'm gonna go back to that first bullet about hours of operations. Setting hours of operations at a park, or, and I'm gonna talk in the next slide about maybe doing that in other places, actually provides the lack of consent that the police can use when they go out there. Because we have this ordinance, the police know there is no consent for somebody to be at the park at 4:00 AM, for instance. Here are some other possible tools that we could... Here are some other possible tools that we could add to our toolbox and our code of ordinances. And the reason why I emphasize the hours of operations. So we could set hours of operations for other city properties, like for instance, the beautiful land that's around City Hall is an example of a place that currently we don't have an ordinance that says you can't be there in certain hours. The chief mentioned around some water towers, I'm sure because that may be some experience he has. It doesn't have to be every property in the city of Fate, but we could set hours of operations so that those are times when people can and can't be there. We could also prohibit overnight camping in like the land around City Hall, for instance. We could establish areas of public buildings that cannot be entered without consent. So I'm gonna use City Hall as an example. Obviously, you couldn't do that for public restrooms or the public walkways, but like the planning desk, there's a door besides the, beside the planning desk. And so by ordinance or policy, we could prohibit people from going beyond that door without consent of a staff member. And then overnight parking. We have a lot of parking lots around our city buildings. And we could prohibit overnight parking except for city vehicles. Obviously, we've got to store city vehicles. But overnight parking and, and the parking lots. The next thing that many cities have, and for years have had, that is not on our books, is a solicitation by coercion. So there, this was a trend, chief, I would say about 20 years ago, right? A lot of cities passed these ordinances. And over the years, the provisions that were traditionally in these ordinances have been stripped away. Some of the provisions have been stripped away and found unconstitutional. So I'm not mentioning the ones that are a problem. I'm mentioning the ones that I think we have a good argument regarding. So we could prohibit solicitation close to ATM machines, fuel pumps, public restrooms. So you know, if you think about what those three things have in common, there are areas where the recipient of the solicitation is in a vulnerable position, right? They're either having cash or they are, there's other vulnerabilities in that situation. And so we could address those. And then of course, aggressive solicitation, so actual aggressive behavior. The Supreme Court allows us to still regulate if you have particularly aggressive behavior. And so those are some of the tools that the chief and I think might be good additions to our code of ordinances.
Is this the last one?
Yes.
So do you want to quickly talk about the anti-squaddling law and what's being proposed in the state?
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of how things started for us in Fate is we had a few residences that that have, we had, we found some squatters. Our biggest problem with that is that the corporation that owned the home didn't want to prosecute. And so at that time, our hands are tied. And it's just like any other vacant property. If the homeowner or property owner doesn't want to do anything, it's, you know, it's not like we can go, okay, you need to leave. And that's about, that's about it. There's, there's not, there's not anything else we can do after the homeowner says, I'm, I'm not going to prosecute their, their trespass. And so we dealt with that on a few incidences in Fate. And we've also found a way that just by our patrols and some of the neighborhoods that call in, or the neighbors that call in, we can combat this a little bit earlier and because some of them got to us a little bit later. And so we can try to stop it before people are sitting there for 30 days or longer and, and started to create a domicile in those locations. So that helps a little bit as well. And so the biggest thing, and we've also talked a little briefly about, and this will be attractive to some of our HOAs also, about trying to get some of these vacant properties that, that we can actually get a
Trespass affidavit.
An affidavit, so that we can act as the owner in their absence. And so, you know, that's good for some of these other HOA properties and things that they're not always on site, that we can act in their, in their absence. And so those are some things that we've looked at to stop those things immediately. And, and then in public place, we've, we've had a couple of people recently, but the one thing that I want, I want to point out that homeless is not a crime, you know, and so we have to, as, as the department, and Jennifer mentioned a little bit ago, that we have to find resources for people. You know, telling them to move on and gather city limits and things like that is unconstitutional. And we have to be very careful with some of those things. And so we're, we have created a draft policy for our personnel that hasn't gone out yet, but that is some of the things that that we would need to make sure and get a list of, of places that, those resources for somebody. And because we, we want to help. We want to help people that, that may be down on their luck or just need to, wanting to, a place to relocate for a while or whatever their situation is. I did go through our, it took a while. This actually took several days to go through our reports on some of these incidences of criminal trespass and disorderly conduct. And in the last six months, we've only had 18 of those crime types that have, that have come through to us. But as we dig down into them, because we had to actually go through them by hand, because that doesn't tell us anything, you know. A criminal trespass is like, okay, there's somebody here, but then we find out that it's, you know, that a neighbor's calling in on somebody because I actually done it to my neighbor, that there's somebody there pet sitting, you know. And so we find out that those things happen a lot to us. And so we go out there, find out there's new issues and we move on. So we had to actually dig down and read in those reports. And, and so we've, we've actually found that our incidences are, are super low when we're actually talking about homelessness. In the last six months, we've, we have four and one of them was the same one twice. And, and so that's, that's what I found in, in some of our research.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate that. Cody, any questions?
Right now, what are we doing if we see somebody who's homeless? What are the resources that we're providing for these people?
So currently, the first thing we ask is, are you okay? And we, we also find that there's a lot of people that sometimes they're not, they're, they're ill. We had one incidence of, of a young man that was staying behind one of our businesses and, and he was, he was, he was an adult, but he was living with his parents and he was mad at his dad and left the house for the night. So, you know, that's the, we look for medical issues, we look for intoxication. And then we just look for, you know, what can we do? We've also found a couple of people that were just technically traveling, you know, and, and one, and we were just, we're a pass-through community. You know, with the interstate that runs right through the center of us, that's very common. And, and so at that point, we, we really have nothing to do at that point.
So there, I know there's a, a young man, I don't know if it's been reported to the police or not, but I know there's a young man that has stood outside of the Dollar Store here in town and has offered to, you know, do work for people. And I'm, I'm sure that that's violating something, but he doesn't seem to be bothering anybody. I was just wondering if you rolled up on somebody like that, is there any, anything that the city offers as of right now? Or is there just no resources for people like that?
I don't know anything the city offers, you know, if the, if the business owner doesn't mind somebody there, that's somebody that's trying to, trying to, you know, work for, for food. I personally don't know of anything that would be bad on our part that would be a crime. Jennifer, can you think of anything out there?
No, sir.
Mark?
Yeah, I guess, again, I understand the homeless situation and people do get down and look. What I, what I also have seen is some of these other cities where we, where they don't get ahead of it, like Garland. And every corner there is a fight for a panhandling situation. I saw just this weekend at the McDonald's, a family had set up there with their two children right on the corner and were panhandling at 5:50, or at Service Road in the Fresh parking lot. So it's, it seems like we already have that in place. Is that correct? Okay. And I, my concern is these businesses downtown not being hindered by individuals. And I, I wasn't there for the last one, but I understand it moved around for several days where he was sleeping on doorsteps. Again, I think we should offer them someplace to go, you know, we need to do that, but, you know, our business, people aren't going to patron our businesses if there's a homeless person sleeping on the steps. And that's the only thing I'm trying to do is get you the tools, because I was under the understanding we didn't have some of those tools, is to get those tools out there so that you have that to use if we need it, not necessarily in every case.
Yeah, most things are in place. There's a couple of new things. This, this page that's up right now are some new things that we'll be looking at to probably bring forward in, in some of the, you know, the solicitation by coercion. I think that's a, that's a big one for, for the safety of, of of our patrons and people buying gas and, and using ATMs and things, you know, and then of course, our city properties will protect those as well.
So I have a couple of questions for you, chief. So one is going to be, City Hall is a public place, right? So they can, during the day, come in here. So you're proposing that we set hours like we do the park, right? But the park's also a public place.
Even though it's a public place, it does have hours that it's closed.
I thought, is City Hall sitting in the city park?
I'm sorry?
Is this City Hall sitting in the city park?
No, it is not.
It is not, okay, so we can set.
Is a part of our parking lot that was part of the park?
My, okay, got it.
Long complicated answer, but it's, it's, it's a legal interpretation on some of that. So we provide parking for the park.
I got issue, I got concerns around prohibit overnight parking. Public, with the city property, I'm for it. Private property, I'm not for it, right? So you, we can't tell a private business owner, like Walmart, right, say they allow rent camping within the rules. So just my concern about that is that. May also worry about the camping. I thought the Supreme Court ruling said you have to provide a place for the overnight camping if we say no to it. That was coming in the Austin case. I thought the Supreme Court ruled that you can prohibit overnight camping if you have provided a place for it.
There's a more recent case that just came out. It's the Grants Pass case that just was issued in June of 2024.
Right, that one, okay. And the last one, Collin County is the closest place I know has services and I know two churches that will help you.
Okay.
And I can pass those to Michael, but the Collin County is a close one. I know, I know it's a drive, I get it, but Rockwall County does not have it. And Collin does. And I know some other cities out there actually send their, drive to Collin County, so.
Well, we have to do that for other situations too. You know, the closest place we have for mental health assistance is Greenville or Richardson.
Well, actually, we can, I didn't ask Greenville. They may have. I never asked Greenville. I just, they told me Collin County, so, okay. Thank you, chief. I do appreciate that. And churches, what I'd like to help. Scott?
So, so the main thing I would say is we just want to make sure you have the tools to be able to best adapt to the situations as they're presented. Every situation is going to be a little bit different. In the case of the most recent deal, my biggest concern was just a person hanging around businesses at night with a lot of minors and young adults who, who, there, there could have been a safety issue there. So the other part of it is when, when we know there may be something going on, at least advising those businesses of the non-emergency line so that your guys can go out and, and at least escort people after hours to, to their vehicles and stuff.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good point, though. We're happy to do that in any business if somebody feels like that, that, you know, they need escort to their car, some of the, the employees and things like that, that, well, we're happy to do that. That's, that's, that's a good thing for our officers to do.
Especially at night when you look at a lot of the businesses around, it's a lot of minors working, definitely a lot less adult supervision, so.
Alan?
When we're talking about public spaces being there without consent, who determines, who gives consent and who says there's not consent?
So that's the ordinance, if we did an ordinance where we set hours of operation, that sets the consent. So like, that's why it's good that we have that for parks, so a police officer doesn't have to call Michael at 2:00 a.m. and say, hey, do you want this person off park property? They know that the park's closed at 4:00 a.m. And so that's why the suggestion is to do that in other places as well.
And then establishing hours of operation, will there be a permit available to get around that? I just think of like Carry the Load, which is midnight to 4:00 a.m.
Yeah, and there's, you know, those Boy Scout groups that do things like that.
Yeah.
I think that's very appropriate to do.
Okay, I'd like to include something where we can get, I don't think a permit to pay anything. I think just a, these cars, be aware, these cars are going to be here past hours because of X, Y, Z event. And someone signs off on that and gives it to the officer so we don't have any confusion.
Mark, the other Mark?
Situations where people are being solicited, say the parking lot at Fresh, is that more of a fresh issue or is it dependent on the coercion? I know I've had a couple of people came, that have asked me if I wanted a, a brand new cell phone for, you know, 75 bucks in cash or things like that. Is that a, would that be considered coercion or is?
Well, and that's one of the things that, that we're looking into with some of these, these ordinances to, you know, like, one of the things that, that I was discussing with Jennifer is, is a certain distance between a place that you're actually doing a sale, you know, your point of sales. And so if you're at an ATM, I would like a zone around me that's away from when I'm handling debit cards or cash or whatever. You know, so those are one of the things we're looking at. Somebody like the, the other business that was mentioned, you know, if somebody's out there asking for, you know, jobs or things, or even if they're asking for money, I would think that the first thing would be the property owner and, or leasing that has control of the property would be first. And some of these ordinances, and Jennifer, you might be able to help me with this, that I'm not sure if they would blanket every single thing on somebody's property if they allowed. You know, like the, the comment earlier about Walmart, you know, Walmart lets trucks park there, but a lot of places don't allow, you know, overnight camping or things like that, you know, so those would be some property owner rights that we would have to work through.
And what would a citizen do? I know I was talking to Michael a few months ago about, we were on the way out of town and noticed somebody pushing a, a grocery cart. Obviously, it's, you know, homeless. And then he told me, I think we may have a couple of those people there. And obviously, being homeless, as you said, is not, is not a crime. What would a citizen be able to do in a case like that to be able to maybe get some city services maybe to lead them and, I guess, evaluate and figure out if there's a way that they can be led into a, a better direction?
The first step is getting in contact with an officer to find, are they okay? What's their, where are they headed to? Is there something we can do to help? You know, and we're going to be compiling some list of resources to, to hand out to those people and, and do what we can as well.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Hey Lance, hey?
The only comment I would like to make is, is to echo something that Alan said. I would, I would like to see a permit process for, for potentially in the park as well. Somebody who wants to do astrophotography or something at night is to be able to be there for a long period of time doing a hobby like that. And if we had a permitting process, I think that would be a good thing.
So how do you, so Carry the Load, right, is on public property. State road, right? 551 states, red state, so I'm, 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 I'm pretty sure the idea, I don't want to get in a way where like Carry the Load would just skip us. Have they got a permit, by the way?
Well, now, they were a little bit different because they, they came in, they're, they're, they're a walking group. They're not really staying in one place.
Okay, I just want to make sure we.
A pit stop. It's just like the rest of us traveling.
Okay, right.
They stop for a little bit, they use the restroom at the fire station and then we move on to the courthouse.
I just want to make sure we don't use some of the stops in the house. Somebody wants to meet five people at four o'clock in the morning, but they went dry. I just want to make sure we just use some common sense on that.
The real topic is criminal trespass and disorderly conduct.
Okay.
And so that's where we really need to focus on the, Jennifer said it best when we were talking, is, is the people's actions. That's what we're really focusing on.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I was prepared to refer to parking as we park our cars at downtown here and then we're gone for four hours in the middle of the night.
And that, that's my common sense.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
Some common sense to it, that's.
I don't think we should charge for a permit. I just think with just a notification that this is why we're here.
Okay, chief and Jennifer, you got what you need? Chief, good. All right, thank you. Next, please.
Next is agenda item six H. Discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding resolution number R 2024-087. Casting votes for candidates to serve as member or members of the 2025-2026 Rockwall Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Oh yeah, I'll take it real quick. So, you want to?
No, go ahead.
So we're at, we have 120, 125 votes for the Rockwall Appraisal District Board of Directors. That's all we get. And so we can either do nothing or we can, I'll make a motion to allocate 125 to one person, but that's what we're asked to do tonight.
My concern is I don't know who any of these people are.
I know one. That's not bad.
Okay, good.
We can do none.
Well, no. Last year, we did none. And I said, and I thought that was a bad idea because we're saying we want to help the CAD, you know, try and, I don't know, fixing the CAD or helping them make make adjustments or whatever. But I think, you know, without any skin in the game, we can't really sit here and complain about the way things are done. Said that last year. You know, I don't know the backgrounds of any of these people.
Yeah, we have a choice tonight.
I think I think the choice is we come back and vote another day and we get something from the city that says, who is Tim? Who is Tim Hartley?
When is this due?
I think it's due.
Who is John HoShel? Who is Richard Kepke? Who is Richard Pence? Who is Cedric Thomas?
A couple of things I we got to remember. Someone state law how already elected people to the ARCAD board. Nobody ran against them.
December 15th.
So we already got the public has reputation from a public on an election already. They start 125 votes and when we ask them, they're probably I'm not sure. I know it's due now or due really quickly.
December 15th, so we could bring it back in next week.
I mean, three, three, four years ago, we pulled our votes with another community and got, you know, John Brant appointed to the board.
No, I arranged that for it to happen. That wasn't that was arranged by me. It's meant our city.
I'm not saying that you didn't. I'm just saying that that's what happened.
I get it.
And last year, we did nothing. And this year, I don't know who these people are, so.
I prefer we vote tonight. That's my session.
I make a motion that we table this until we get backgrounds on the people that we're that are we're thinking about voting on.
I'll second.
Who seconded?
Nobody.
Oh, Haley did.
Okay. All right, we hand vote then, right, Vicki? Are we do this?
You can do it away promptly.
All right.
Would the appropriate word be table or postpone?
You postpone it.
Postpone it to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, postpone. It's not table. It's postpone.
Postpone.
But you don't have an eight. It has to be the next meeting. So, all right. Any questions or any more comments besides we shouldn't be doing this? All right, please vote. All right, motion passes six to one. Next, please.
Next will be Agenda Item 7, Mayor Council and City Manager Reports.
All right, Lance.
First of all, to all of our veterans, I know the words aren't enough. I deal with veterans on a daily basis. We have an epidemic of veteran suicide. We have an epidemic of our veterans that are are not looked up to in our country. And there is certainly a heartfelt amount of gratitude that I personally have for every single veteran that I deal with every single day as part of a part of the work of what I do. But to those that we don't, our country would not be our country without you, without your sacrifice, without the sacrifice of your families. And, you know, I just, I don't have the words to appropriately express the gratitude that we should have and that we should be teaching our kids to have and that we should be as a country and as a state and as a city to thank those vets that we have.
I'd like to echo his his statements. They're absolutely true. My father was a Korean War veteran. My father-in-law was World War II and a Korea. I grew up with the utmost respect for people that served. I did not serve. I came from a lazy generation that a lot of people just didn't get in and we were spoiled. And but we needed to appreciate that. We just had an election. I don't think we veterans protect our rights to have elections for people to go have votes, for people to go have their say's in that. I just don't think as a country and, you know, a lot of us do appreciate it. It's something we got to keep working on. We got to vote on a lot of very important issues here. They protect freedom of speech. And I know there's a lot of talk tonight about social media. People do have a right to, even on social media, even though we don't like it, to say, you're doing a great job. You're doing a garbage job. I don't know why you do this. I don't know why you do that to debate topics. The answer to speech we don't like is more speech. And those veterans protected that. They they fought and died for it, a lot of them. And as opposed to complaining about speech and people shouldn't say things, get on there and fight them back. I mean, it's ideas. It's an arena of ideas. And it's important that, you know, we understand that. And when it comes to, we got an award tonight for transparency and thank goodness, we've got a great team over there that does that. Transparency is an important thing. It's not a word. It is something. It's a result. It's something that, you know, you hold your hands up and say, this is what was done. This is what happened. And you don't hide it and say, well, you just you should be reading, you know, the the laws and things like that. Educate people. If you know, if you know something and you don't think people are getting the the correct information, post it. Let them read. Let them decide for themselves. That's what the First Amendment is all about. But I'm grateful every day to our DPS and our first responders. I will never go a day in my life without without thanking them. Thank you, guys.
It's pretty impressive. A 14-year-old girl shows up and talks about an issue that she's passionate about in front of council. That was outstanding. Thank you, Hannah, for doing that. December the 6th is our Christmas tree lighting. The kids get to come out right here in City Hall and sing songs and entertain us and just a wonderful time to get together as a community. Also, we're in the shopping season. Watch out for your Amazon boxes out there. Porch Pirates are going to be walking around doing stuff. Our DPS, thank you guys for everything you do. They also have a vacation watch form you can fill out. If you're going to be gone for an extended amount of time, you can fill out the form and that'll let our officers know that if there's a car and people unloading a TV and you're out of town, it's probably not supposed to be happening. Street maintenance continues. Scott, thank you for all that, even some places that were that got fixed and weren't quite fixed correctly. Where our guys are very diligent about making sure that the contract we pay for is is actually getting done correctly. And I appreciate that. And again, please ask any questions you have, you know, of council members. We all have emails and phone numbers that are published. Looking forward to talking with people. Thank you.
Scott?
So in honor of Veterans Day, just some quick pieces of information that were represented to me this morning. There are 15.8 million veterans alive today in the U.S., representing approximately 6.1% of the U.S. adult population. I consider myself fortunate that more than 6.1% of my friends have have served in some form or fashion. Veterans have served during wartime and peacetime with roughly one-third having served in one-third of the veterans alive today having served in Vietnam, a quarter in the Gulf War, and 28% serving since 9/11. The percentage of veterans alive today who who served in World War II is less than 2/10 of 1%. The vast majority of veterans are U.S. citizens, but citizenship is not a prerequisite prerequisite for enlistment. And non-citizens today make up about 5% of our veterans. There are no veteran, no living veterans from World War I, but I'm grateful for every veteran that has served, including my father, who served from Guam during the Vietnam War, servicing airplanes that that were in action in Vietnam, including my grandfather, who was a Marine and served in four island invasions in the Pacific Front. My other grandfather, who served in the Army in World War I and served in the trenches fighting in Europe. And I'm grateful for the other relatives I've been able to identify that have fought in various wars back to the earliest date I can identify as the Mexican-American War in 1849. So thank you to all veterans that have served. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So a couple of things real quick. Chief, congratulations on the bond. DPS bond. Thank you to the voters for voting that in. Just quick data point, about 60% of the debt votes in state Texas failed, by the way. So it's good that we got it passed. And I'm grateful the voters do that. On the Veterans Day, I'm very passionate about, first, I'm a third-generation veteran. My son-in-law makes the fourth generation. He has served in various Air Force, Army, Navy, and Army, actually. So thank for that. I am grateful for my family's history of doing that. But I'm very passionate about what happens tomorrow and the next day and the next days. State Texas really needs creative funding for the veterans. And there's a lot of repulsives to do that. And so is the federal government and VA going forward. So remember, we have about 23 suicides a day in veterans going forward. And that's what's important now today is the next 362 days, we remember that. And we do things together as a community and press our state elected officials to do more for them because we owe them. Honestly, we owe them more than you ever imagined. And so I just want to do that. And then, Michael, thanks for what you guys do. Jennifer, thank you for all the announcements you guys did. And Chief, as always, thanks for all the work of DPS. Keep it safe. Mr. Harper?
I just want to echo the thanks I have for for veterans. I want to say thanks even for my family. Both my father and my father-in-law both served in the Navy. My father in the Vietnam area and my father-in-law in Korean War. Also want to thank all of those who come after them that have served and who will serve in the future. You know, some some give all, all gave some, some give all. So it is, you know, we're sitting in this room tonight because of those folks and I do appreciate it.
Cody?
In honor of Veterans Day, I want to honor my own husband, who served four tours in Iraq as a tank commander. He is 100% disabled today and he received a Purple Heart for getting shot. And then he deployed two more times after that and was hit with direct fire from a rocket. And, you know, a lot of times when they come back, even the ones that do come back, they don't come back the same. They leave a portion of themselves out on, you know, the field. And so to the veterans that are like my husband, thank you is not enough. And to your families and your spouses, we just appreciate you and your sacrifice so, so much. The other thing that I want to say is that this week, my family experienced an emergency, a tragedy, and it was with my puppy. And the community here in Fayette really just showed up and they prayed for us. So to y'all that that stopped by my house, thank you so much. For those of you that called and text messaged me, I really, really appreciate it. It won't be forgotten. So thank you all.
Michael?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, veterans. And just one announcement. The this Thursday night, the there's a meeting on the Outer Loop at the New Courthouse. It's a public meeting. And that the time is 5:30 to 7:30 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Vicki, what's next?
Next is Agenda Item 8, Executive Session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, the City Council will recess into executive session, closed meeting, to discuss the following. A, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, to deliberate regarding real property. One, property acquisition for expansion slash construction of Miss May Drive. Two, property acquisition for a water line easement on Rochelle Road. Three, to consider the purchase of Blackland Water Supply Corporation property located on North Ben Payne Road. B, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, to discuss or deliberate regarding economic development negotiations. One, performance in Chapter 380 Economic Incentive Agreement with J&amp;K Land Development regarding property located at 201 Green Hill Lane, Rockwall CAD, property ID 16510. And two, Chapter 380 Economic Development Incentive and Performance Agreement with Freet LLC regarding property located at 301 East Fayette Main Place, ARCAD, property ID 1055A.
I'll take it and take us into executive session at 7:52. Thank you.
All right, take us out Executive session at 8:29. We have a call, we have a call, okay.
Okay, no action will be taken on items discussed in executive session so next item will be adjournment.
Make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Please vote. Maybe. On paper say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, good night.